Thanks for joining us tonight for our school board directors meeting. To get started, I'd like to do a roll call of the school board members. I'm Julie Bookenegra, Board Chair. Victoria Bradford will be joining us shortly, Vice President. Rob Perkins, Director.
Here.
Director Ginny Gronwal.
Here.
Director Rachel Rogers.
Here.
Superintendent Mike Merlino.
Here.
Administrative Assistant Laurie Stroll.
Here.
Great, thank you. And there's several others that are joining us on the meeting tonight that will be presenting information to us. Again, good evening. My name is Julie Bookenegra. The time is now 5:33 and under Governor Inslee's proclamation 2028 in response to the COVID-19 outbreak temporarily suspends portions of the Open Public Meeting Act. The proclamation requires that all attendance at an open public meeting not take place in person but occur remotely, including the board directors and the public. Our meeting this evening is conducted via Zoom audio webinar. At this time, I would like to recite the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Okay, to start our meeting, we will adopt the agenda for tonight. So if we will entertain a motion to adopt the agenda.
Director Gronwal moves to adopt tonight's agenda.
Director Perkins will second.
All right, it's been moved and seconded. All in favor, say aye. It's an aye for me. Director Perkins?
Aye.
Director Gronwal?
Aye.
Director Rogers?
Aye.
Great, thank you. All right, next on our agenda is the Board Consent Agenda. Again, we'll entertain a motion for approval.
Director Gronwal moves to approve the Board's Consent Agenda.
Director Rogers seconds. Okay, it's been moved and seconded. All in favor, say aye. It's an aye for me. Director Perkins?
Aye.
Director Rogers?
Aye.
And Director Gronwal?
Aye.
Great, thank you. All right, next up, our Superintendent Consent Agenda.
Director Perkins.
Oh, sorry.
Moves adoption of the Superintendent's Consent Agenda.
Director Gronwal seconds.
All right, moved and seconded. All in favor, say aye. It's an aye for me. Director Perkins?
Aye.
Director Gronwal?
Aye.
And Director Rogers?
Aye.
All right, great, thanks for that. Now we'll move on to the Superintendent Report. I'm going to turn this over to Superintendent Merlino to give us an update.
Thank you, Julie. Appreciate that. I want to start with highlighting the last couple of weeks, we had ribbon cuttings at our three new elementary schools. I believe everyone participated in one of them. At least, we had Emerald, I think it was Friday and a half ago. And then last week, at the beginning of the week, we had both Image and Sifton. And that was a nice opportunity to socially distance and see whether or not we could make a garden shear cut a ribbon that may or may not have been cuttable. But we had an opportunity to also tour the schools. And while they were still some finishing touches going on in the schools, I think everybody was quite impressed with the work that's gone into those elementaries. And they're beautiful. And I know that everyone can't wait to have our students return ASAP safely and appropriately. And we'll talk a little bit about kind of that plan and kind of what timelines might look like with respect to that today. Obviously, last Tuesday was our opening day of school. I have kind of shared information about the opening and some of the successes and some of the struggles. I think there's no question that 2.0 was received well from the perspective of our parents when it's, and our students, when it's compared to the short amount of time that we had to prepare for the spring. But, you know, even with the successes of the plan, again, we've talked a lot over the summer about the work that went into that. You know, there obviously in the first week are going to be some glitches around technology. There's going to be, this year, there's an attendance expectation, not only for elementary, but for, you know, all the way through the system. And so we're kind of working through some of the issues on attendance. Our state does not fund based upon attendance. It funds based upon enrollment. But particularly in the month of September, to be able to count a student in enrollment, there needs to be some sort of a contact with that student in the first four days of school. So I would say that we had some eventful things occur in the last few weeks. We got all the MOUs finalized with EEA, with both with PSE, open school last week, and I think had a successful week in the remote learning, understanding that we want to keep our eye on returning students to our schools as quickly as we possibly can. We opened last week with students at 49th Street Academy and in the Transitions Program as well. We continue to monitor the reports that we get out of Clark County Health. Remember, we've got through the state's Department of Health Decision Tree, there's either low transmission, which is less than 25 cases per 100,000 in your county, moderate between 25 and 75, and high, over 75. And again, in all three of those categories, we have the ability to bring students in in small groups, which is why we've already started to do that. We're planning on our next groups of students coming in. I think that there'll be some additional special students, some students on special IEPs, not special IEPs, just on IEPs, that we will continue to expand next week. We will begin our kindergarten pilot the week of the 14th at four of our elementary schools, Image, Sifton, York, and Crestline, where we bring in kids in groups of five, morning and afternoon, four days of the week, the week of the 21st. We will have our student engagement teams have identified, students will be running, will really be running routes to bring kids in for the kindergarten program. In the week of the 14th, we will have those routes expanded a little bit to start bringing in the students that have been identified through the student engagement team by the week of the 20th. So we've got a lot of stuff going. Back to the Health Department, they released their report today that the previous two weeks, we're, I think, a little over 64 cases per 100,000. So we've been, I think we were at 88 four weeks or so ago. We had a week of 73, I guess it was five weeks ago. I think we've had 73.7, we've had 71, and then last week was 63, and then 64. So we've been in the moderate area for a good four weeks. We'll see whether or not there's any impact from the Labor Day holiday and whether that increases that number or not. But we're watching that, and I think the whole county is watching that. So we're feeling good that we've remained in that moderate, again, with the idea to get to hybrid when we've had a number of weeks successful. I'm going to, later this week, tape kind of a, kind of an outline of the return to school, like onsite. I think a lot of our parents are interested in that. We've shared a lot of that, those conversations in the last several weeks. But I think it would be good, again, now that we've actually started school, for us to kind of put out an update in how that looks and how that works with the Department of Health and kind of where are we at, kind of what's that path back to school. We've talked over the last several weeks, we need to, we need to share the hope for our families that their kids are going to be coming in, and I think we're getting closer to that. So I would expect that we'll put something out later that week on that. One of the other huge issues that we've talked a lot about over the summer has been enrollment and funding. Two weeks ago, we shared the furloughs that had been put into effect in our large group PSE, bus drivers, a lot of the building employees. I think we had an article in the paper that there were 475 folks impacted by that, all kind of looking at what was the enrollment going to be. We've talked about, we already budgeted for about a 2% decline, which was roughly 400 kids. And we had talked about if we were 5% or we were 10%, what that might look like. So we ran our preliminary count on Friday afternoon, our elementary enrollment. So if we looked at our total enrollment, September of 2019, we reported approximately 24,542 students. Our September 20 count is at 23,282. So that's over 1,200 less students than what we reported a year ago. We, again, had anticipated a decline of about 400, so that would reference about an increase of 800 students over what we had kind of already expected. And again, where you're seeing the majority of that is in elementary. We're down September to September, 1,100 students this year. Actually, that's not true. We're down, that is true, we're down about 1,100 students. And the budget, we are expecting that we could be around 1,000 below what we had expected for elementary. Middle school and high school, where there was concern about what might happen there as well, our middle school numbers are, again, this is based upon, if you looked at our September count this year and you looked at previous years, what do we typically move from September to an average for the year? Because we're funded on average, not on any particular month, our average student, full-time equivalent. We would be probably about 70 down in middle school and up a little over 100 in high school. So in the middle school, it's, in the secondary, it's almost a wash. Primarily where we're seeing this hit is in elementary. We've talked about reasons for that. Our kindergarten enrollment is down about 300 from what we had budgeted, so that's a good share of that. And we have had approximately 550 families fill out the intent to homeschool form, or 550 students. So that's, I don't have the exact number on how many we had last year, but that's an increase as well. So I honestly think that we've been talking, or I've been talking and sharing, honestly, probably since May, June, as we've been building the budget, that we could see a drop of enrollment of 1,000 to 2,000 students. If we end up on the side of 1,000, that's probably obviously better than 2,000. But between that and the issues with transportation that we're facing, you know, we could be talking about a $10 to $15 million decline in revenue over what we had budgeted. And we'll talk more later about kind of what we've done to start offsetting that. But I guess my point right now is just to share that kind of where we're at is kind of where we thought we might be at, based upon the conversations we've had over the summer. That's not good at all, at least though we've had this, you know, a plan of how to address this over the summer and executed a plan on how to address this. So that's, I guess, the, at least, at least we were prepared for it. I shared a couple of weeks ago, you know, that represents a lot of really wonderful employees in our district that are home right now and unable to work, and that's very unfortunate. The, I will say that we probably have in our buildings, between our certificated and our classified staff, 1,200 to 1,500 employees in our buildings right now. So there's obviously a lot of folks in our buildings, working in our buildings, even with the option until that they're asked to come back if they're serving students or providing educational services. But, and I appreciate the work that everybody's doing. I mean, honestly, it feels like for six months, we've just been facing one challenge after the next. And I know that that can get tiring and that can wear people down. I appreciate all the staff of the district office that's been there every day, every step of the way, working on trying to create the best program we can for our families and our students. I appreciate our teachers executing that and all our certificated staff. I appreciate the classified staff that we still have in the building supporting our students, whether that's building secretaries, whether that's our ELL pairs, our special ed pairs. Again, we still have a lot of classified employees working, supporting families in our buildings, and they do a great job every day. I would also like to say a specific, a specific thank you to Shane Gardner and Scott Epinger, who have done a ton of work around the building prep work that's gotten us to the point where, you know, we've got our social distancing going on in buildings. It's amazing to see the work and the energy that's gone into it. We have had a few issues, we've had some technology issues. Our buildings are starting to offer opportunities for families to come into the schools and access our technology, just access our Wi-Fi basically, if they're struggling at home. So they're working through that on an individual basis. In some cases, we've got administrators providing supervision. We've got classified staff providing supervision, socially distanced, not huge numbers, but that's something else we're trying to do to support our families that are having difficulties in any way. I appreciated a conversation with one of our parents of Covington students last week, and it was really her recommendation to, you know, we've talked, we talk in a lot of these meetings, and we've had a lot of people participate in these meetings. But it was her idea to, you know, retape kind of the path back, you know, how do families start coming back? And she had middle school students, and I was kind of concerned because the elementary will come first, and then middle and high school will come after that. And I was kind of, I mean, I was just telling her the truth. Unfortunately, it's really going to be elementary kids that come in before our middle and our high school students start to come in in a hybrid plan. But, you know, this could happen in this timeframe, and she was just so appreciative that there at least was a time that there might be. And she's saying, you gotta, you gotta tell the world that, you know, just so people have hope, basically, that they know what the path might be. So that, I appreciate her, and I appreciated her honesty. I actually had a really good conversation with her, and that was great. So I would say, week one went as well as could be expected. We continue to work on reacting to week one and improving things. We're working, one other thing, last Wednesday, the first buses ran last Wednesday, and that was delivering meals to our families in Marion Elementary Boundary Area, where every school is offering meals four days a week. But the one school that doesn't have a school is Marion, because they go to the old image when they start coming in, they're going to be at Image. So there isn't a site for families that live in the neighborhood to be able to come. So we created an online forum for them, and we delivered meals. In the first week, there weren't a lot, but I know that that'll increase significantly tomorrow. They receive five breakfasts and five lunches, so they get their meals for the whole week. And I guess one other thing that happened the day before school started, which would have been after the last board meeting, you're all aware of it, but the USDA finally extended the waiver for the summer food program, so that all of our students receive free meals like they did last spring. And they've extended that through the end of December or until they run out of funds. So that's a positive, and that's wonderful for our kids. The only kind of, I guess, arguable downside would be, it might, pause down, is to be less likely to fill out their free and reduced applications. Our LAP funding is very impacted by the free and reduced percentage. I've already started talking, and I did last week, with Representative Stonier and Representative Harris, trying to make sure that the legislature is aware of that, so that they have the, you know, the foresight to start having the conversations, potentially do whatever they can with the funding formula. We're continuing to work with our families, helping them understand why it's important. The fear would be if they don't file the application, and then it's January when everything changes, then they turn the application in. Our LAP funding for next year is based on October's free and reduced percentage, and that's quite significant in our funding. So we'll do whatever we need to do legislatively to make sure everybody understands this issue. I think that the first week has gone very well. I appreciate everybody and the hard work, and I appreciate all of you and all the work that you did over the summer in getting us to the point where we're at today. And we will just keep working on assessing the situation and getting kids in and the appropriate size of groups as safely, and our staff as well as safely as possible. And that's it. That wasn't quite 22 minutes, but it was about 18.
Thank you, Mike. Do we have questions for Mike at all?
I wanted to ask about the, what I've been told from a couple of state-level sources is that the fall allocation or distribution, if you want to call it, was going to be based on the budget numbers rather than the September count. Is that, is that going to accrue positively for us, or do the averages just kind of average it out?
Yeah.
It is what it is?
So every year, we budget in the spring, and between September and December, we receive what we budgeted. So that's not new for people to share that. I know I've heard Superintendent Reichdahl say that a number of times. And our funding September through December for apportionment, and primarily all the apportionment other than transportation funding, is based upon what we budgeted in the spring. Our funding for transportation typically goes through January, and then they adjust that in February. They adjust our apportionment, and, you know, apportionment would include special ed, it would include ELL, it would include LAP, highly capable, all of those funding sources. We always receive the funding for the first four months of the year based upon what the, what we had budgeted, and then it's reconciled to average in January. And then each month, we update enrollment, it impacts that. So our elementary student enrollment tends to grow throughout the course of the year. Our September enrollment's typically about 100 less than what it would be on average for the year. Our middle school stays relatively flat, maybe grows just a little bit, and our high school typically drops over the course of the year. But that, that phenomenon of getting funded the first four months doesn't change. I would also add that our special ed enrollment is tracking pretty closely to what we had budgeted, so I don't see a similar decline in special ed. And our ELL, we don't do special ed or ELL, we don't do a September count, because it usually takes a little time at the beginning of the year to identify students. But if you look at the number of students we had last October in ELL, we had approximately 3,400, and our number in September this year is 2,800. So depending on what the growth is between September and October, we're likely down 10 to 20% in ELL. There will be a reduction of funding in that, with that respect. Our special ed enrollment has stayed flat. The only issue there is the fact that our basic ed enrollment has declined. If our special ed enrollment stays flat, it means our percentage of special ed students is higher. We already are pushing the 13.5% cap, so we're a little bit over the 13.5%. So what it means is that we may have been funded for 3,300, we may have 3,300, but we might only be funded for 3,100 this year or so. I'm not sure what the number is, but we will have a decline in revenue more likely than not in special ed, but not because we have less kids. So that means we have to serve the same number of kids with fewer dollars. And that's the funding formula that was constitutionally bound to be legal and appropriate. One that, nothing changed other than a pandemic, and our overall enrollment declined, and we lose funding for maybe 200 students. That was sarcasm.
Yes.
Mike, can I ask a question about, I know last week, you started having staff calling on students that maybe were enrolled last year that we haven't seen this year?
Yeah.
Have we had success with that, or are we finding out what's keeping kids away so far?
Well, I think that, I think that they not only just, I think the teachers were doing a lot of those calls, but I think the buildings were doing some of those calls even earlier. I honestly, I don't have an answer to like the anecdotal, what is the reason why? I know that we've got an increase. I mean, if you figure we're 1,000 down, there's 300 less kindergarteners. We don't make those calls because we have no idea who those kids are. So, you know, we're probably up maybe 400-plus homeschool, intent to homeschool. Our, one thing we do see, an increase in enrollment through is our Home Choice Academy. So we had about 170-ish kids in the fall, September last year, we're up around 235, 240. So, you know, some of those students may have opted to choose the online program as opposed to, so, but I don't have the answer as to necessarily, like, if they got through, what were reasons for that? I know that they made efforts to call, and I know that they're continuing to do that because, as I said, our enrollment's based upon not just September, it's based upon every month. So we need to, we need, you know, this is why we've talked all summer long about trying to create as great a program as we can, because it's not just a matter of starting there. We gotta, we have to keep our folks and our families and our students engaged. I do believe that having kids brought back onsite is going to be a positive for that as well. And we may, you know, depending on how early that occurs, we may end up bringing some of these families back.
Yeah, I was just curious if that was maybe some of the, like, they might come back as, you know, they're allowed to come back onsite, I don't know. I just was curious what those, how those conversations were going, and if we're still having them, if we're still trying to.
You know, we get, we get, we still get calls, like, we had a voicemail from a parent today that was just, you know, I know you're doing everything you can, but, you know, we just need to get our kids back in school as quickly as we can. It's just a real struggle for our families, obviously. I mean, I'm not, everybody wants to come back safely and appropriately, but this is just a real difficult, it's just a difficult scenario. And I know there's, I'm just looking at Julie, Rachel, and Ginny, and myself on my screen, and three of the four of us have kids in elementary school that we're having to figure out how to work with and make that happen. So it's, it's just a, it's a, it's a tough situation, and we have to follow the guidelines, we have to follow the cases, and then just be ready when it's time.
All right, any other questions for Mike? Victoria's joined us.
I saw Victoria. Hi, Victoria.
All right, well, if there's no other questions, then we will move on. The next on our agenda is Matters Reserved for Board Action. This is Resolution Number 6396, Evergreen School District UTGO Bond Sale 2020. I'm going to turn this over to Mike for an overview.
So again, we talked a couple of weeks ago about this, but in February of 2018, the district passed a $695 million bond. We've seen a lot of the wonderful results of that across the district. We previously, in May of 2018, sold 125 million. We sold another, I believe it was 200 million in, in 2019. And so we are at a point where we can sell the next round of bonds. We've got major projects going on. I mean, we've got New ASC, we've got Hollingsworth Academy, we've got Legacy, we've got Transitions. Y East, you drive by Y East, you see a lot of flat dirt where there used to be fields. You drive by Mount View, you see flat dirt and huge hills at the back of the property where there used to be fields. We've got Ellsworth and Marion and the rap. So we've got a number of projects going on. Interest rate's extremely low, and so we're ready to move, make another bond sale. The first two bond sales have been competitive bid bond sales. We plan on doing the same thing. So what this resolution actually does is gives the authority for us to sell $275 million worth of bonds, which we plan to do, I think, in early November. This leads the way for the work, either by negotiated sale or competitive bid. We plan on doing a competitive bid like we've done the last number. We know we get the best price we could possibly get that day when it's competitively bid. What the resolution does is when you do a competitive bid, there's a shorter window of time for acceptance. A negotiated sale, a lot of times you can wait until the end of the day for a board meeting for the board to execute the agreement. With the competitive sale, the board delegates authority to myself and to Jennifer Jacobson, who is our replacement for Bill Thackeray. And then we come back with the report that day to you of what the true interest costs were and the results were of the sale. So this has authorized us to sell another 275 million. That gets us to 600 million total. We'd have one more sale of 95 million, and then we would have sold all of the 695 million. That's probably a year out or so. It allows us to do the competitive bid, it delegates authority to Jennifer and/or myself to sign on the sale that morning. Usually what happens is we open the bids around 8:30. Most of the bids don't come in until about 8:25. It happens at 8:30, and then Mark Pressing, our financial advisor, works with the winning bidder to do all the final numbers, and then we work up the final documents, I sign it, we share it with you. And then within a number of weeks. And then we work up the final documents. I sign it, we share it with you. And then within a number of weeks, our, they, the purchaser, the underwriter ends up transferring or wiring that $275 million to the county treasurer and we have the ability to continue our project. We sell 275 million, rates are historically low, we're getting great interest rates for our taxpayers. You have to be assured that you'll spend the full amount within three years. We will do that. That's not an issue. And so that's the background on the resolution.
All right. Great. Thanks, Mike. All right. So at this time we'll take questions from the audience. Lori, is there anyone in the audience that has a question about the bond cell resolution? If anyone raised their hand that we can tell virtually?
Lori's muted. I see Cindy Chang has a hand up. Or Chung, I may have mispronounced it. I apologize.
Hello.
Cindy, is that you? Did you have a question for us?
Yes.
Okay.
So I am a student from UCSD and I am a part of this organization called Cove Ed. It's an undergrad led initiative in response to the COVID-19 crisis. I am, I specifically wanted to reach out to your school district to share our program to your students. We have helped over 2,500 students so far and we'd love to offer our program to your students.
Hey Cindy, right. I'm sorry to cut you off, but right, right now we're taking questions about the, the bond cell resolution.
Okay, sorry.
If you, you know, it's okay. If you, if you have a citizen comment, we're going to do that in, in just a little bit. So can you hang on and then maybe come back with us at that time?
Yeah.
When we ask, when we ask for citizen comments?
Yes, no problem.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
I think it's wonderful. We've got students in San Diego watching our board meeting tonight.
Right, we're reaching people all over the world.
My daughter went to school in San Diego and she never watched a board meeting when she was there. So I appreciate, I appreciate that.
All right. Was there anyone else that had a question or comment right now about the bond cell resolution?
Not at this time.
All right. Thanks Lori. All right. Questions and comments from the board?
I don't have any questions, but I do want to say that the work that's been done on the project so far has been really great. They've, in spite of everything, they've kept everything going and it's been beautiful to see these buildings coming up all over the district and it's just gorgeous inside. I just love them. They're, they're really nice learning spaces and I'm, I'm really happy about them. So thanks to our facilities, folks, led by Sue Steinbrenner for the work they've done and will, they will continue to do.
Yeah, it sounds, it sounds like we're going to come ahead with the low interest rates too on this go around. So that's really good news. One good positive. All right. Any other questions or comments from the board? All right. Then we will entertain a motion.
Julie, I'd like to move that we adopt the resolution as presented to kick off the bond sale. Resolution 6396 Evergreen UTGO Bond Sale 2020.
Director.
Director Bradford second.
Ginny seconded?
Yeah.
All right. All right. It's one moving second and all in favor say aye. It's an aye for me. Victoria?
Aye.
Rob?
Aye.
Ginny?
Aye.
Rachel?
Aye.
All right, great. Looks like we can move forward to keep those projects moving. All right. Next up is board comments. So this is comments by members of the school board. And then we want to kick us off? I just have maybe just something to say about the ribbon cuttings that we were able to attend. It was a lot of fun. One, Victoria, I've just mentioned that buildings are beautiful. The work that's being done with our bond project is going fantastic. But what I was really excited to see was when we were at Image, it was the day before school started and we had all these families that were outside. There was a lot of excitement. So it felt like the beginning of the school year. First time it's felt like that in, well, six months. And lots of the families were all waiting outside socially distanced, waiting to meet with their teachers, which I thought was fantastic. There's a lot of the teachers that at Image have been calling their students and I'm sure that's happening throughout the district before the school year started and they were doing some meet and greets with their teachers. And you could just tell there was some excitement around that and it was just really fun to see. Anyone have anything else?
I could echo that for the Emerald ribbon cutting on previous Friday. We didn't have a lot of parents showing up, but I don't think we had any parents showing up, but it's just nice to see that building coming together. Librarian there, the teacher librarian has put together a wonderful collection of books and she was gushing about how fortunate we were to have the bond issue and all the help that she had in getting to choose a good collection of over 10,000 books, I think, for this new elementary school. So I felt like there was a lot of appreciation for the new facility and a lot of hope. And that was good to see after, again, those six months. I'm hoping things continue to improve that way. Got to watch a high schooler do the first week of remote learning and it does seem to him and me both to be a very good plan, especially compared with where we were six months ago. There's a lot of organization and and mastery is the word I like to use when I watch our teachers do their things, that they have figured out an awful lot of it and they seem really good at being able to compensate for the rest. So it's a good plan so far. I know y'all are keeping your eye on it. Appreciate that too. That's all I have to say.
All right. Thanks, Rob. All right. Anyone else have anything?
All right. If not.
We're all just tired. It's been a long week.
It was just the beginning of the week, Ginny, technically, right? It's been a long week already.
Well, it's, you know, it's the second day with the kindergartner now. So all three kids. So I'm sure Rachel.
In both of working and. You got to get into your groove, huh?
Yeah. We had, we added PE into the mix today. So which I'm, you know what, I actually am loving the interaction that the teachers are having. So, you know, just kind of stepping back and watching how excited they're still getting and, you know, doing PE and they're, they're very, at one point we did a scavenger hunt, like they're, they're being very creative in the ways that they're teaching. And it's, it's pretty incredible to watch how much they've just kind of transformed the usual and made it to fit what it needs to be right now. And they're doing it. And so I do want to applaud all of our educators and all of the staff who has been working so hard to make this run a lot smoother this time around.
Good. So you can join in the PE class too, right?
I took a break at that point.
All right. We'll go ahead and move on to future agenda items. Any of the board members have anything that they want to have for a future meeting?
I talked to Lori a little bit this, just a short block of time at our next meeting to talk about the Board of Distinction application and the board's self, self-review.
Evaluation.
Yeah, the self-evaluation. I sent the email out to Wassa today to get that link to us so that we can take the little survey and that's, that's the discussion and then the final review of the Board of Distinction Plan. Shouldn't take long.
Yeah. So we'll want to complete that and then talk about the results of the next meeting, correct? At a workshop?
And I did see the email go out. It was either to all users or all parents asking for the Community Equity and Inclusion Committee that I think Clarissa is putting together. So I know we're proceeding on the equity work, but I want that to be, I want that to be in each meeting. And so just kind of acknowledging that here.
That is correct. That was sent out. And the second training, many of us participated in the training a week or two ago. I don't know what it was, maybe three, four weeks ago now. I don't remember when it was. But many of us participated in the round two, I think it's next week. Is that right, Clarissa?
Mm-hmm, on the 15th and 16th. And we have the remaining staff from ASC or district office attending that meeting as well as any building administrator or dean or instructional coach who couldn't attend in August. And then after that round, we start, we start in at the building level with our schools and our certificate staff. So I'm really excited about that.
Looking forward to seeing what changes.
All right. Anything else? All right. If there's nothing else on the future agenda items, we'll go ahead and move into citizen comments. So this is the time that citizens who wish to speak to the board can raise their hand. We have a few people that are signed up. Just keep in mind that we'll need your name and address and then keep your comments to just under three minutes. Lori, I think we'll go ahead and let Cindy, Cindy Chang finish her comments that she was going to start earlier. Is that all right? Sure. I think she's still with us if she just unmutes.
Hi, yes, I am.
Cindy, can you give us your name and address?
Uh, yes. Um, so my physical address, like the street address?
Yes, please.
So my name is Cindy Chang, C-I-N-D-Y-C-H-A-N-G. And my physical address is, right now I'm in San Jose, so 3161 Gulf Drive.
Thank you.
San Jose, California.
Okay. All right. Go ahead. And I'm sorry we cut you off a little bit ago. So go ahead and.
Oh yeah, that's fine. So I am from UCSD and I'm a part of Cove Ed, C-O-V-E-D. This is an undergrad led initiative in response to the COVID-19 crisis. We wanted to connect K through 12 students with undergraduate and postgraduate students from universities like Harvard, Yale, Princeton and MIT, also continuing to expand. We've already helped 20, over 2,500 students so far and we'd also love to offer this free program, which is free virtual mentoring and tutoring to your students in your public schools. And we wanted to help spread and promote this service with personalized academic tutoring and resources, which includes like workshops, guest speakers, presentations and bi-weekly newsletter offers and opportunities to your students. If you would be able to help spread our website to your school districts, that would be very appreciated.
All right. Thank, thank you, Cindy. So one of the things about public comment that we can't really respond to something that's not on our agenda, but if you wanted to maybe follow up with an email to our board of directors email box with some of your information, then we can have somebody follow up with you?
Yeah, that works.
Okay.
Did she give the name of the website?
I don't think so.
No.
Oh yeah, I can give the name. It's www.coved.org.
We've got a number of people, I'm sure that just wrote that down. So we can make sure that we make that contact.
Okay, sure.
All right. Thank you so much, Cindy, for joining us tonight.
Thank you.
All right, Lori. I, on my list, I have Margaret Gorman. Is Margaret available? Is she?
That's correct. And we're unmuting her now or asking her to unmute. Margaret?
Thank you so much. Can you hear me?
We can hear you. I'm Margaret.
Hello. Thank you, school board, for giving me the opportunity to speak to you tonight. My name is Margaret Gorman and I am the high school theater teacher in this district at Evergreen High School. I come to you on behalf of the middle school and high school theater teachers and the thousands of performers, technicians and theater students attending Evergreen Schools. These last several months have been a whirlwind of change from having performances canceled last spring to adapting our programs to this new norm over the summer to only inform our students that once again, there are no opportunities for programs has been disheartening. Of course, we recognize the state of the world, the loss of life, loss of income and property, the chaos of this year and the unfortunate furloughed friends of this district. We see the darkness as well as anyone. The world of theater is housed in both stories of darkness and hope. This last week, my colleagues and I had very similar interactions with our students. Hundreds are without meaning and purpose. They're looking for a sense of normalcy in their school experience and the families they found in our programs. An outsider might wonder, how can theater and performing arts exist during a pandemic when sports activities and large scale events are canceled all over the world? These are honest questions, but the truth is this, theater has and will exist everywhere under all circumstances. Theater is the art of storytelling. And while no, we won't be producing musicals on our stages with audiences, theater has been made and will continue to be made. We can stream virtual plays. We can create student-directed productions online. We can create theater for our communities. In this time of isolation and uncertainty, please let us work. Let us continue to run our programs and create experiences for our students and communities. Let us be the creative forces to give our students something to be hopeful in and proud of. We understand why contracts were canceled and money's frozen, but we believe this decision was short-sighted. No, we cannot bring thousands of elementary school students to see our production, but we can make children shows that can be sent to the elementary school teachers for free. We cannot hold rehearsals at school, but we can direct our programs online. We cannot teach dance on stage, but we can teach choreography over Zoom. Please don't hold us back. Let us engage with our students, our families and communities. Surrounding districts such as Vancouver and Kansas have agreed that their supplemental contracts will be paid, provided program administrators can positively adapt the learning to current health and safety regulations. This means that there is an equity issue in opportunities for students across district lines, especially when staff are asking to be allowed to continue their work. We are asking for three things. First, that middle school and high school theater contracts be available for those teachers that desire to continue their programs through online relationships and want to create meaningful opportunities for thousands of Evergreen students. Second, the ASB monies, particularly theater account monies that have been made and earned by theater programs, be unfrozen and available for use. And lastly, the reinstatement of district, district funding for theatrical performances and arts allocation funds would greatly impact the experience of our theater students, school communities and the greater community beyond. Thank you so much for letting me speak tonight.
Thank you, Margaret. All right. Next we have Kimberly Brown. Is Kimberly, oh, there she is.
Hi there. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Go ahead, Kimberly, when you're ready.
Hi. My name is Kimberly Brown and I currently serve as president of the Evergreen Drama Boosters. I have two sons in the district, a sixth grader at Pacific and a senior at Evergreen. I'd like to speak on behalf of our Drama Booster Board as well as our theater students and families within the district. We don't have a fall program to speak of, no thanks to COVID, but I'm concerned about the current support for our theater directors and programs, which affect a vast amount of theater students within the district. It seemed they didn't know to the last minute as to how their programs were going to be handled, only to find out that they wouldn't have an after-school program in the fall because their stipends have been revoked or temporarily paused. I do not understand this decision. I understand we can't have students on stage to share their art or passion or hard work this fall, but art isn't defined by a stage, a building or by filled seats in an auditorium. Art is mobile. Art transforms. It has no boundaries. It's created by the terminate, determination of a director with a love and passion for educating and in turn, students ready to recreate that passion into art. These students need an outlet. These directors have worked tirelessly over the summer, staying in communication with their students at their own expense and personal time. While many teachers finalized grades in June, the theater directors kept going all summer, making sure the students remained active in their craft, healthy and assisting students who needed food or other supplies during the stressful pandemic that hit many of our theater families quite hard. My point is this, their jobs didn't end June 19. I don't know what my son and his peers would have done without this outlet over the summer. He, along with many theater seniors in the district, are making a career in the art of acting on the stage. They can't afford to miss out on staying fit. Not acting for months is as damaging to an actor's craft as an athlete who does not participate in their sport for months. This lack of training to fix focus, stamina, strength, confidence, and determination. And I haven't even touched on the kids who just need this program as an outlet from their home realities that are far from healthy or even safe. So let me end by saying this, please reinstate their stipends so the arts can be brought to students' homes across our district. It is necessary to the health of our children during times such as this. I appreciate you all very much and your staff for working so hard during this difficult process. So thank you very much for your time.
Thank you Kimberly for joining us tonight.
That's.
All right. And then we have Mark Claussen. Claussen?
Yes.
Okay. Hi, Mark.
Hello. Uh, thank you for allowing me to speak to you tonight. My name is Mark Claussen. Uh, my address is 16600 Northeast 32nd Street. And I'm a band director and orchestra director at Mountview High School. Right now, all the stipends that reimburse music teachers, similar to the drama teachers for their time outside of the normal school day have been eliminated from the current MOU. These stipends reimburse music teachers for a number of activities outside the school day that directly support music students during the school day. These activities, including managing instrument inventory and checking out instruments for students to participate in band and orchestra at all secondary levels. Additionally, beginning band and orchestra drive-through nights are currently scheduled to safely allow fifth and sixth graders to pick what instrument they would like to begin to play. I feel strongly that not providing access to music education by checking out district owned inventory creates equity concerns and access issues for students and families who cannot afford their own instruments. Again, before and after school clubs like jazz band and middle school chamber choirs and orchestras have also been eliminated. All of this work is vital to continuing the successful music programs and can be done in our virtual learning format. I was not part of the bargaining team that negotiated this MOU, but based upon our conversations that have come from it, it seems apparent that neither party was fully aware of, A, that the work, all the work that was being done in these co-curricular contracts and what they support, and B, how that work was already being carried out in a virtual distance learning format. When these concerns were brought up to the district and to the union, people on one side of the issue told us to not do the work if we don't get paid. And on the other side, we heard, I don't know what to tell you. And in the end, this leaves kids in the middle. If we don't do the work, who is going to? These opportunities for students can and should happen virtually, from managing inventory to creating virtual concerts that have been featured on the Evergreen PS media accounts, to running a jazz band club. All of these, and in all of them, our students deserve the opportunities that these create. A solution to this issue would be to honor all music co-curricular and extracurricular contracts in the same manner as those contracts that are currently on the MOU's accepted list. If the work can be done virtually or socially distanced, it should be honored. The Evergreen Public Schools and its parents have always been strong proponents of music and the arts in our area. My hope is that this issue was a simple oversight in the process of navigating a new virtual landscape. And that we can find a common solution that provides appropriate and varied opportunities for students while honoring a teacher's work. I would be happy to answer any clarifying questions and thank you for your time.
All right. Thank you, Mark, for joining us this evening. Lori, is there anybody else that's raised their hand? That was the only three that were on my list.
Bruce Dunn is on.
Yes.
Sorry, Lori.
Oh, that's okay. So yes, we have Bruce Dunn. Did you want us to unmute him? Yeah, Bruce, go ahead and give us your name and address.
Okay, can you hear me?
Yes.
All right. Uh, my name is Bruce Dunn. My address is 18211 Southeast 16th Street, Vancouver, Washington 98683.
Thank you.
All right. Um, I thank you very much for allowing me to speak today. Uh, I'm a former Evergreen student of 12 years, having graduated from Evergreen High School. I'm also a 21-year veteran teacher in the Evergreen School District and the band director at Covington Middle School. I'm also an Evergreen parent who's had two children graduate from Union High School. I agree with all the things that our drama teacher said, as well as Mr. Claussen and, and our parents have shared. COVID's damaged a lot of things. We are all very eager to get back to normal. The most recent MOU with EEA eliminates the majority of co-curricular contracts, which include clubs, activities, and extra duties. As a band teacher, I consider the stipends of my, for my band to include engaging kids in playing jazz band, chamber ensembles, concerts, and then such. One of the things that those supplemental contracts pay for is managing each school's instrumental inventory to kids who show need. And this is an equity and access issue. There are many extra duties that these contracts pay for. And just like Mark said, I've heard many say, well, just don't do the work. And that's just not acceptable. As a teacher, it goes against what I believe is absolutely right for kids. So to eliminate these stipends, thereby removing up to 15, 10 to 15% of some teachers' pay, these extra duties, which we cannot divorce from our main job because it is co-curricular, these duties are still being done because it's what's right for kids and we know it, but not getting paid. I implore you to reconsider these decisions. There are many of these clubs and co-curricular activities which provide healthy social options to kids for, who may otherwise just be sitting at home watching TV or playing video games. We hope, please, that you will reconsider the cutting of these stipends and co-curricular activities. If nothing else, to consider them on a case by case basis or to allow the work to be paid to employees on a per diem curricular rate until the amount of the stipend is exhausted. And just this weekend, I was at least 13 hours, I'm working on getting instruments ready for students this morning. So, um, thank you very much for your time. I know this is a monumental task that you guys are taking on and we sure do appreciate your support. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Bruce. All right. Lori? Is there anyone else?
No, I did this time.
Okay. All right. Well, with that, uh, the board will take a short recess. Maybe just a few minute break. Does that sound okay to everyone? Then we will reconvene for a board workshop. At that, this time in the workshop, we will discuss the 2021 budget. We will have a school reopening models discussion. We'll have a legislative update and then a board meeting debrief. After that, we will have an executive session where we review the performance of a public employee. All right. We will go ahead and go into recess and join back in about five minutes. Does that sound good? Thank you. I don't know if everybody's back. It looks like the board is back. Rachel, are you back?
Yep, I'm here.
Okay. Oh, there you are. Um, should we go ahead and get started?
Ready to roll.
All right. So I guess first is the budget discussion.
Yeah. So I just wanted to talk, um, you know, now that we've got some, you know, we have at least one piece of information. I just wanted to kind of reiterate some of the things that are occurring to try to help offset that. You know, you're talking about, uh, I honestly think that the enrollment number decline of revenue could be somewhere between nine and 12 million based upon what we're talking about right now. So significant, uh, not insignificant. Uh, and then, you know, we, we are positioning ourselves to be running a number of our routes by the time we get to the, I guess, October 24th is the last date of the first transportation count. I would say within the next few weeks, we'll probably have at least 100 or so routes running. Of those, a handful are Wednesday routes that don't receive funding. But most of those are going to be either special services routes, or they're going to be to from routes for kindergarten, um, or our students that are brought in through the student engagement teams. But I, I think it's reasonable to lead, to believe we could have, I would say another three to $6 million reduction in transportation revenue. So all in all, a fairly significant number. You're very familiar with the, the furloughs that have, um, occurred previously. We have an MOU with Office Clerical PSC that talks about accessing the work share program for a number of our, our secretaries. That work, we were kind of waiting to see what the enrollment looked like to determine. I think this week, uh, that will likely be implemented. One of the unknowns that we have right now is the impact of the furloughs and any layoffs because along with the furloughs, um, you know, there is a potential for layoffs related to just the decline in enrollment. If, if the number of, uh, positions that we have are driven by enrollment, there's a chance that there could be, it could be a layoff as opposed to a furlough. We have to kind of see what happens with the enrollment. But, um, the, the office clerical, uh, you know, winding that down will occur this week. Some of the kind of the final decisions, um, but we haven't really seen anything enrollment wise to impact that issue. So, you know, we, we have, um, obviously significant issues with respect to revenue. I think that, um, we have seen, I think Battleground has announced their furloughs. I think from out of the area, uh, Longview had previously, I, I'm getting some messages that Vancouver might be making announcement of similar types of reductions in Vancouver at their board meeting, uh, tonight. And I think in my calls with other superintendents in the area, a lot of, of those folks were waiting to see what the numbers look like. And then we're going to be working with their school boards this week and next, talking about the same types of reductions. One of the reasons that we talked previously about our reductions occurring when they were was because of the fact that we have, um, you know, you, you have buildings, uh, with the classified staff every day that we delay, it's, it's less money that's saved, saved in this issue. The one piece that I'm not certain of, I mean, there's obviously a number of pieces I'm not certain of, but one of the things is the impact on the unemployment. Uh, we are part of the unemployment pool with EST 112, most of the districts in Southwest Washington. As more of these, uh, furloughs or layoffs take effect, uh, there will be more pressure on, uh, the unemployment co-op to ensure that they've got the funding to make those payments. And so there's a potential for increasing in rates. So not aware of what, what additional bills we may see. I will say that typically what has occurred in the unemployment pool is that for every gross dollar earned, there's point 002% of that salary that is paid into the unemployment pool. In anticipation of potential reductions, the pool tripled that number to point 006. From us just going from point 002 to point 006 was just under a million dollars for our district in additional costs. So depending on what, um, and of course, the federal government is paying for part of this. They reimburse half of the, of the, um, payment out through the, the Corona the Cares Act. But we're uncertain of what the impact might be there. So even though we've kind of estimated what we think we might save on the classified side, part of it is, you know, one of the things we're trying to do is get our kids back into school as quickly as possible, and that's the right thing to do as safely and as quickly as possible. Obviously, the sooner that we bring our students back, the less money that we will save, but we only exist for the kids. So we need to get our students back in as quickly as possible. It just may mean that we need to come up with some other alternatives for cost savings. When and if that happens. And when we get to the next, uh, topic on the agenda, we'll talk a little bit about kind of the, how does the flow of bringing kids back might, how it might look. On the certificated side, we had talked about, um, we had talked about, um, And when we get to the next topic on the agenda, we'll talk a little bit about kind of the, how does the flow of bringing kids back might, how it might look. On the certificated side, we had talked about, we had talked about some of the things in place, accepting some folks that had released. We have some people that wanted releases from their contract. We've had people that have been interested in reducing, going out on leave. What we've been able to do is, is we're working on ways that we can kind of move staffing around to cover those types of situations. That helps us save a little bit of money. But I think in the end, between the set, the positions we'd frozen on certs, folks that are taking the retirement incentive, leaves, things like that. We probably have over 30 positions that we've accounted for in savings. So we're doing, I just want to make sure that you know that we've been doing what we could since the spring with freezing positions in anticipation of that. We're working with our staff on ensuring that we can usually takes a couple of months to kind of start getting into the, how does payroll look and what are our numbers look like? We're very likely to be looking at this real early. Another one of the mitigating issues is some of the reimbursements, depending on the leaves that folks take. Could be that we pay the staff member and then we get the reimbursement back from the federal government. So it's, there's just a lot of work that has to go into this, understanding the bottom line that we have. I know that there's a, we have a 5% fund balance that the board has in place. 5% for our district is approximately 18 million, let's say. I have said previously, I would expect that we could be in the 27-ish million coming into the year. So that's why it's important for us to do everything we can to try to offset as much of this as we can. Understanding that honestly, when we get to the legislative session, we really don't know what the legislature might do because they still haven't had any kind of a public conversation with respect to their $9 billion shortfall. I do know that if we've seen a 5 to 10% reduction in enrollment, if that occurred across the state, you're really talking probably about $1 billion in annual savings with respect to just enrollment related. So if the state was really 9 billion short or $8.8 billion short, that was over a three-year period. This next biennium and the second year of the current biennium that we're in. And I think it was really roughly about 4 billion in the first year and then 5 billion in the next two. So the 4 billion, I think there's a chance that they could use some of the rainy day fund to help offset some of that. The two and a half billion annually thereafter could potentially be addressed somewhat by dropping enrollment. But they still have a shortfall that they need to work with. And so we have to see what happens with legislative session when they come back in January. And I've, I've shared before, previously that we've had, you know, right now I'm meeting at least every other week or thereabouts with Representative Stoner and Representative Harris. I've been able to participate through Senator Billig, through Speaker Jenkins. So we're doing our best to share the issues at the state level. What we will definitely be doing is very early be doing our estimates and projections. We're not going to wait, obviously, until we get to November's, you know, what have we paid out in November, December? We're working on this as we go and trying to make the best decisions to impact the program as minimally as possible as we can. Understanding that we do, you know, we don't have the ability to wipe out a fund balance. We have to be responsible with how we manage our money. But more than anything else, I just wanted to, again, we're working on it, I'm working on it, our staff is working on it, Janay's working on it on the, on the HR side. The cabinet is working on it in terms of the program and making sure that we're communicating and doing our best to make the best decisions we can in a very difficult situation. And that we're going to be constantly looking at it and reviewing it. This will be something we talk a lot about this year, there isn't any question about it. So I'm happy to answer any questions you might have about specific things. What I would anticipate is every month, there'll be more updates, there'll be more information. Obviously, you get information throughout the year. But what I would be thinking more along the lines is information with respect to kind of based upon the reductions we've made. If we're bringing kids back sooner, what does that mean? If, if we have a spike in cases, what does that mean? What, you know, just what options do we have to try to make sure that we're remaining as financially? You know, we just got to be smart about how we're handling everything. And so we'll just be talking a lot about that this year.
I was going to ask, have you heard about enrollment in other districts or they, is everybody down?
I've talked to Vancouver a little bit. They had budgeted for around a 200 drop. And based upon the conversation I had with Brett last weekend, there may be another 600, 700 beyond that. Their official count was still being tallied, I hadn't seen him. So for 1,000, there may be 800, something along that line, so not that far off. We're having our superintendent call throughout Clark County tomorrow. So I'll have more, talk a little bit with Jeff in Camas. And I think they were talking to maybe 4% or 5% drop. If we're truly down, you know, 1,200, if we were down 1,000, 12, you know, we're talking about a 5% to 6% decline in enrollment for us as well. So I don't know that we're all that much different. And it's in the same areas, it's kindergarten, it's intent to homeschool. You saw the article in the paper this morning, I think talked a lot about the increases in the online programs. So, you know, we've experienced that ourselves. So we have to really be creative and thoughtful of how we administer our programs. And we're probably going to have to make some decisions here. I mean, we've been saying, honestly, I've been saying for two years, it seems like, now that we've got unprecedented this or unprecedented that. But I think we have unprecedented decisions in front of us with respect to, because we, honestly, and I've been doing this type of work for 32 years. And I've never seen a year in any of those 32 where districts were faced with the types of decisions and cuts after the school year had started. I mean, I'm not saying, there have been budget cuts over the years, we've had a lot of them. And I'm, Tori's been on the board for 20 years herself, plus probably. And I don't believe you've ever seen this type of a situation. So it's, it's just unprecedented, they're difficult decisions, they are difficult decisions. And we, I think, I think we've done a really good job, to be honest with you, of keeping kids at the front of those decisions and doing our best to always keep them at the front of those decisions. Not to say that we're perfect with that at all, but there will have to be decisions made that, that just stink for everybody. So, on that uplifting note.
So you think, it sounds like you're talking about a $2.5 million shortfall statewide per year after they employ the rainy day fund the way you think they're going to.
I'm saying, based upon what we saw when they came out with their numbers in June, like 2.5 billion.
Yeah. A consistent 2.5 billion.
It was something like that, it might have been 3 and 2. Yeah, I think maybe they were expecting things got a little bit better over the three years, or maybe, let's say, 4, 3 and 2. And I think it was something like that.
Okay.
Now, there'll be another revenue forecast that comes out this month. So we'll see what the updated numbers are from the legislature.
It doesn't sound like it's a single year problem, it's a three-year, four-year problem, probably longer than that.
I think that that's fair to say that, I do think that's fair.
Because if we were to, if we were to decide, and kind of thinking aloud here, but rather than advocating for any decision. But if we were to decide to use some fund balance, that would be one-time money. We wouldn't get that back in follow-on years with continued funding reductions.
Correct. You know, we, we had already planned to use, because we were able to add a little bit to our reserve this last year. We were already planning on using some of that. So there's no question we would use some of it as we address this year. But that was before we were anticipating another 10, potentially 10-plus million dollar reduction. So really, it comes down to the, the specifics of the actual reductions we're talking about and how deep we're able to make that, you know, happen as painlessly. But there is no such thing as painless cuts of 10 million. But, you know, like I said, we're doing everything we can to have our, our students in school. You heard the, the, you know, some of the citizen comments. I mean, there is an effort to get kids engaged in, into programs because they're being excluded from things. And this situation, again, unprecedented, that, that we've never seen happen. And I think the longer we go, and, you know, depending on what the results are in other places, when you see other schools in other, in our state potentially. You know, the Kales County, their rates are a little bit lower, I think there's a chance they come back. I would say, last week, there was a report from Pierce County. Their health department saying that in the moderate range, everybody should be in hybrid and like now. So again, we've talked over the summer, and I've talked a lot about, you know, following the science. But if you have a state decision tree that says, you know, if you're between 25 and 75K per 100,000 in one county, it's fine to go hybrid in another, well, we might need to wait. That's, it's, it's a, it's a different scenario and we just have to keep monitoring it. But we want to get our students back as safely and as, and as quickly. And I guarantee you, our staff and our families want that as well.
Are any other questions about the budget? It was pretty good segue into the next topic.
I had a quick, quick question that kind of goes with both. Do you, what, what is your guess on the kindergarteners that we're not seeing? Do you think a lot of those parents are just going to wait it out a year and have their kids start late, you know, just a year later? To just avoid all the rigmarole?
Right. I mean, I don't know that we, we need to kind of ask our principals and staff to kind of, what are they hearing anecdotally? But I think that's what a lot of people have been saying. I do think if there's a chance to bring students in, it's going to be from some of the programs that we, well, like we're piloting. We'll talk about, we'll pilot starting next Monday in those four elementary schools. And then everything goes well with that, we would roll that out across the district, I think the week of the 28th. And so, you know, I do think there's a chance for some of the, and not just the kindergarten students, but we're seeing the primary decline in elementary schools. So there might be an opportunity if kids are getting back in, in a hybrid, even a couple of days a week for some of these families to change their mind and bring their students back. But I do think that, you know, there isn't a requirement for kids to come to kindergarten. So if you're a parent and you're thinking you, you might be able to wait, I can see where there might be that thought to do that. But I don't have any like hard and fast, this is what we're hearing, we can ask that question.
So of the, of the applications that we've had to home, for homeschool, do we have any idea how many of them are going to have, are going off on their own somewhere? Or are they staying with our home choice?
No, I think the majority of the, no, the homeschool, intent to homeschool, all of those are going on their own. So if they're turning in an intent to homeschool form, my understanding is that they're moving to doing it themselves. And, and because they wouldn't need to fill that form out to, to go to home, they would just re-enroll to at a, at home choice. They would just change their enrollment. And that's K-12, it's not just elementary, because they're working on, they've created a file alphabetical and they're kind of filling the grades out so we can see, you know, what, where is the, where is the distribution of grades? They haven't completed it, but it's, it's in excess of 500. It's students, it's not families, it's 500 students.
Right. Oh shoot, I had another thought in my head, went in and went out.
I could ask, go ahead.
Go ahead, go ahead, Rob.
Oh, when do we, in a normal year, when would we begin getting reliable data about trend for homeless student registration? McKinney-Vento or knowing what the rate of free and reduced applications are? Does that come this early or is that something that we'll learn about later on normally?
I can't, I can't answer with respect to the McKinney-Vento, I can find that out. With respect to free and reduced, we usually by the end of October have a pretty good idea what that number is. The first 30 days of the year are whoever was free or reduced the previous year, they're automatically free and reduced the following year for 30 days. Then you get your new applications. Then there are situations where people thought they might have been free or reduced and something changed. Or they, they're no longer, if they drop off, then those families often get that application in pretty quickly. And they try to reconcile that really rapidly. So usually by the end of October, we have a pretty good idea of that. With the new waiver, you know, of course, there's, there's, it's a, I mean, there's, it's just a different situation. So we'll have to see how that, but we would typically know by the end of October, early November, what the, kind of what that number looked like.
Okay, remember your question?
Yep, I remembered it. Do we keep any kind of records or is there any way to track how many students are maybe going to enrolling in private schools? Like if they request their, their
Transcript.
documents from here, their transcripts and different things?
You know, I don't know the answer to that, but, but we can certainly, I, somebody does. If we have, because they would request the transcript, so that's a, that's a, I don't believe that there's, I think that they just disenroll their student. But I'm not sure in that process if they say, this is where I'm going. But certainly if we're sending things, we, which we do, we would have, we would be able to compile that information.
Just be curious to know, on the ones that aren't homeschooling.
Where are they going?
Where are they going, would it, yeah, what's happening there?
That's, we can check on that.
Okay, thanks.
All right, should we go ahead and move into the next topic?
Sure.
Okay.
So basically, what I wanted to do is kind of talk through the work that's going on now. And then how does that, how does that translate? So, you know, we, of course, started remote learning last week with both, as mentioned many times, 49th Street Academy Transitions Programs in more onsite learning in small groups. This last week and this week, the student engagement teams are continuing their work to identify students. Next week, the week of the 14th, I've said it a couple of times, that we will begin the kindergarten pilot at Image, Sifton, Crestline and York. And those four schools will bring in kids in groups of five or less for morning and afternoon sessions. Pretty sure it's, it is, it's Monday and Tuesday. So the same groups of kids would come from Monday morning, I come Monday morning, Tuesday morning, Monday afternoon, Tuesday afternoon. Wednesday, no students are on site, last for some more deep cleaning. And then that second cohort comes on Thursday and Friday. So the week of the 14th, we would be bringing in all of those students. And I think we have either three or four teachers at each of those sites. So you're talking six, 10, you know, 14 to 16 or so, a number of kids will be coming in the week of the 14th. Going through the protocols, the attestations, the social distancing. And I believe having the same kinds of experiences that a lot of our folks did during summer school where they were, you know, the kids were so happy to be in school and the staff were very happy to work with the kids. The week of the 21st, Jay will have, within the special services program, more students identified to be brought in. Understanding that throughout the next, you know, this week and the next week, if there are situations where there are families struggling with the connection or they're struggling for whatever reason, they've reached out directly to the school and the school can support that. We've, we've got some kids coming in in small groups, a family of maybe two kids. Or we might have a family that's struggling with either a hotspot or wifi that's coming in. And we're able to set up in kind of a study hall type of environment for them. So that's happening as we're going. So that's happening as we're going. We get to the week of the 28th and we go, uh, the student engagement teams, the students that have been identified. Now we're full with the student engagement teams. The groups of five, which we will have every grade level in an elementary and in a middle school, will have, in a high school, will have identified students to come in and be served, um, by our staff onsite. That allows us to kind of expand that number a little bit. And then that will move as we, as we move forward. So if we think about that, and then each week having the opportunity to add a few more kids that have been identified. But ultimately really thinking about the, how do we get to hybrid? The hybrid from, um, has been talked often with, uh, um, Dr. Melnick and Dr. Craigor. Uh, they were really pushing for a, um, looking at where we were starting the week of the 21st with respect to the cases per hundred thousand. And then going three weeks after that. So you'd look at the 21st, the 28th and the 5th of October. And that would potentially put us, with good results, it put us in a position to on the 12th of October, get to where you could be in a hybrid situation in grades K through five. So we, we need to, um, uh, kind of continue to see. We talked this morning in cabinet about the 12th of October being a moment in time that we would potentially be looking at as the hybrid, which would allow the week of the 28th, the week of the 5th to get kids in, test them, and then potentially start getting to a hybrid in elementary the week of the 12th of October with continued cases at the rates that we're seeing them. Again, we've had four consecutive weeks below the 75 per hundred thousand threshold. And I think this week was 64. So we had three weeks of decline. This week stayed relatively flat. I think it was 63.7 last week and or 63.1 and 64, something like that. So, um, if we get to that point and we've got that success, we would be looking at, at potentially being hybrid the week of the 12th. And then we would look for three weeks of continued, um, either plateau or decline. And then we would start to consider, uh, we would start, we would, we would look at the middle school and the secondary potentially three weeks after that. So you could, i- if everything went perfectly in terms of transmission, you could look for potentially an early November, first week, second week of November potential for hybrid in our secondary schools. So I, I just wanted to kind of talk through that, timeline, the thoughts around that and, and just getting kind of feedback that you might have or questions that that might raise with respect to reopening.
I think it sounds like a good approach. You know, waiting the three weeks, making sure that we're clearly in, um, even though we're in moderate range right now, it's still kind of near the top, I guess. Um, so just kind of, you know, making sure that we're clearly in, um, before we move to the next phase.
And we'll work, like we've had weekly meetings with Dr. Craigor and Dr. Melnick, and that will continue. We'll have our one meeting tomorrow with, uh, our, our most recent one tomorrow. And then, um, like I said, every week we'll continue to have those conversations. I think that there are some districts that are interested in not waiting until the 21st, at kind of pushing that and moving potentially to their hybrid by the end of September, first week of October, we'll have to kind of track that and see how that goes.
In Clark County or Calhoun County?
Clark County. I think Calhoun County definitely is considering that because their cases, I think, are even maybe at the very low moderate or even low range. So I, I do think Calhoun County is probably maybe in this area, maybe going to be the first districts to move. I think, um, that we may have some in Clark County looking at going earlier than mid-October. We'll just have to continue to see, monitor that. One of the things that we've talked about previously is when, you know, going to hybrid. If, if we're in a hybrid, you know, it's why bringing kids in smaller groups in each week to get ourselves to that point where we can get to hybrid. I think we all think makes sense because if you think about an elementary, I mean, we have some elementary schools right now as low as 350 in enrollment. Maybe some as high as maybe 600. We've had some 700 in the past, but if you talked about, you know, 175 or so to 200 elementary kids, there's not going to be a huge jump. If you're looking from the student engagement team, students, the kindergarten students to a hybrid. But if you go to a middle school, you go to a high school, you know, we have middle schools, the smallest is maybe 800, the largest is 1,000. So you're talking four or 500 kids. And in high school, you're maybe 14, 50, 1500, as much as 1,800. So you're 750 to 900. Those are larger groups. So it's going to be important for us to try to get some numbers in, get those up and work through our protocols and, and be comfortable for bringing larger groups in. It, we will have more time to do that with the secondaries because we wouldn't potentially get there until you got into November.
Because really the concern at that point would be, because the classrooms would be small. It would be able to social distance. It would really be about passing time and the getting everybody to their classes in the morning.
Coming in in the morning, dismissing in-between periods. And also, uh, you know, i- in an elementary school, your cohort is your cohort. You know, you go and, and in this case, if we're, if we're hybrid in elementary, you could be talking, you know, some of our elementary classes, 16, 15, 16, 17, as many as, you know, mid twenties. So you're talking anywhere from maybe eight to 12 kids in a class, something like that. Those, those numbers are manageable. High school would be the same. If you, you know, you know, you're talking 14 kids or thereabouts. It, it's just more kids. It's just gonna, one of the, one of the things we have to continue to ma- look at enrollment and see what the enrollment looks like in terms of what those numbers look like also. Um, but yeah, it's, it's, uh, those, you know, and you're going from one period to the next period. You're not staying with the same kids all day either. So you're, you're around different kids throughout the day. So that's also something that you have to take.
Hey Mike?
Switching in and out.
Yeah.
I swear I'm losing my mind tonight. Um, have we had any issues with complaints about people not following the protocols? With the mat, wearing of masks and distancing and things of that nature?
I'm not saying that there haven't been. Um, and I think I've heard anecdotes of, of different, uh, comments from staff, uh, potentially not having masks on. I know that, uh, or, you know, the social distancing, you know, for the most part, it's, it's primarily staff in there, uh, in our buildings. Uh, I haven't heard a lot of, of issues around that. And I just got a text saying that we haven't received any formal complaints about it. I'm not saying that there haven't been anecdotal complaints about it. But like I said, we've probably got between 1,200 plus staff members in the buildings right now. And, uh, some small groups of kids, but nothing, nothing, um, formal at this point. I, I, you know, we talked a lot about how important it is for the kind of the captains at each building that have been designated as the social distancing and the COVID captains. You know, I think there's a few different terms that they have for them. Very impo- I mean, it's extremely important that we follow the protocols and we, you know, we, we've got to make sure that people feel safe and that we're doing everything we can. Uh, and that's, you know, the guidelines we're following are guidelines from the CDC, from the state. We just need to make sure that we comply with that.
Julie could teach that class. She does a good job at her office.
Yes, she can. If, if you do come from the bank and do that, uh, would you mind bringing some money too? Cause we could use some money. Maybe that would be not a good recommendation.
Probably not a good idea. No.
I don't think they keep as much cash as we need.
It's probably true.
Um, I guess the thought that I'm having is related to the fact that if you're thinking about October 12th, that mid-October is where cold and flu season starts to ramp up. And I wonder if Dr. Melnick or, who's the other, what's the other name?
Craigor.
Craigor. If they, uh, if they factor that into their models, then what they expect as October sort of goes towards Halloween, as far as case results go because cold and flu season.
Yeah, I don't know.
Should we hope or should we plan for the worst?
Well, I think we have hope and then we'll react to whatever we see happen in front of us. You know, there's not, I mean, everything, you know, there's a lot of unknowns with respect to the transmission. I, I honestly, I feel like when I go driving around now, it feels a lot different when I'm out and about than it did six months ago. I mean, things feel to me more like they felt before. In terms of traffic, some of that, that, but obviously, yeah, it'll just be, it'll be interesting to see what the numbers look like from the updated revenue forecast in September. Uh, the other thing that that won't have in it is honestly, it's kind of like with the recession that we had in 11, 12, nine, 10, in those years. There was the recession that hit the population and then it hit state government, state budgets a few years after that. I, I feel like now in maybe this year and next year is where we're going to start to see some of the impact on the state budgets. Because again, like I said, I mean, you, you, unemployment, it's just, it, it, what would be helpful for us honestly, would be if the federal government would come up with another stimulus package and it came to the states and we actually were able to benefit from that. You know, we, we were able to k- to maintain the revenue from the CARES Act. That's going to help. But if we had another CARES Act where they made money available to, um, school districts, uh, to face the things, it would be very helpful. Uh, but I think of the most recent thing I saw was they, they don't think they're going to come up with another federal stimulus plan. So
Yeah.
Just being kind of on our own.
Yes, the other thought I, that we never had a cold and flu season where everybody's six feet apart wearing masks.
That's exactly right. I saw something today that the, some of the, the, the doctors are actually saying that because of the masks and social distancing. They're, they're expecting to see much lower rates of some of these things. So you're, I agree with that statement. I saw an article on that just today.
And if we get our flu shots, um, we could actually have a better year as far as regular flu goes.
It would be nice.
Yeah, it would.
I mean, just again, anecdotally, I mean, basically with everybody's social distancing and staying home, like I know my kids haven't been sick for six, seven months. I mean, it's been a long time. They, they usually have a cold or something all the time. I don't knock on wood. But I haven't really felt the effects of anything for quite some time. So, you know, I do think that that some of the practices and just the hand washing that people are doing and some of these things are going to reduce that somewhat. I can ask that question though tomorrow. I'll ask that question of, uh, of, uh, Dr. Melnick.
That's, it's, it's that and whether or not they're also including Monoma County in their thinking, Clackamas County. Cause we're all a big region. Even if they close half the I-5 bridges, still people traveling across there. And I know a lot of our teachers live in one.
And, you know, I just got a text from Janay. We, we, uh, have done these, uh, flu clinics for our staff pretty much every year for a number of years in the fall, and they're still arranging that. They're going to do drive-through flu clinics for flu shots, um, in October and November. So people are still going to have the opportunity to, uh, to get a flu shot. They don't have to take their shirt off in, in the green conference room. They can just drive through without a shirt on now. I mean, some, if you don't wear a short sleeve shirt, you know, that's, I'm talking about the guys. I'm just thinking about some of the guys that over the past few years I've seen had to roll, they couldn't get their sleeve up.
Alas.
There's always got to be something.
So a lot of unknowns still.
We, we have a lot of unknowns, but we continue to work. And like I said, this morning, we talked about looking at mid-October as a potential for hybrid. I know that Yvonne's already working on their routes. I think by the time we get to the 28th, I might've said it earlier, but we will likely have about 100 routes out driving. We go to hybrid, we'll pretty much have almost all of our drivers back employed. So, um,
That's good.
Yeah, that is good. That is good.
Well, the plan matches the, I guess the projection models that they rely on. The University of Washington, the, I don't remember the acronym, but, uh, he's just looking at the graphs while listening to you. Yeah. Let's, let's hope.
We're, that's what we're doing and we're continuing to plan. And I, you know, I've, I've said it many times. I appreciate the, like I said, we got a lot of staff working hard for our kids. We got a lot of staff in our buildings working hard for our kids. And, uh, I appreciate everybody. And we've got a lot of people that are having to sacrifice right now with respect to the furloughs. And so we just want to do our best by all of those folks as well.
Agree. All right. Anything else?
Not for me on that. No.
All right. Then we'll move on to legislative updates.
I, for me, I don't really have a ton. I don't know if, if, uh, Rob's got anything to add. I, I like on my end of things, thinking about financial stuff, it's real important to see what happens with the revenue forecast that will come out this month at some point.
I think we gotta wait for that. What's the, it's only the eighth, so it's, it's in a week or two, right?
Yeah, I think it's usually closer to like the 20th or somewhere thereabouts.
Maybe at the next meeting.
Yeah.
Think, I haven't had any conversations with legislators or, uh, anything more than just kind of watching state leaders track the, uh, lunch program thing, which was happy to see that they put out the waiver for the summer lunch, the way you talked about. A day after I got a letter in the mail from the district with the free and reduced forms. So all that stuff went out and then the news changed.
Yeah.
Just like it has every week since this started.
Yeah, it was good that at least we got it before school had started. But yeah, I mean, basically we work all summer long on something and then the day, uh, the day before school starts, now we've got to change everything. Cause it was, it was a big, uh, um, effort at all of our buildings to try to determine, you know, we're, we're trying to have as few people coming into the building. So you're trying to access meals from exterior doors, but you also, before you got the waiver, you had to have the ability to do the point of sale. And that meant you had to have power close by where you were trying. So it's just, it just, I mean, the, the stuff you try to put together and figure out, it's just like, you gotta be kidding me. It really is. It's crazy, all the stuff that we're dealing with.
Just can't get over it. Probably won't happen this way in our lifetimes again.
I would be, I think it'd be fantastic if this never happens to us again in our lifetime.
I, uh, I was hoping though, Julie, if it's all right, uh, you asked me to take the lead on the Board of Distinction and we could insert that. Just as a report, that's all right. She's muted.
Yeah, go ahead, Rob.
Okay. Um, is that I was, I took a look at the, uh, the application for Board of Distinction this year and it's the same as last year. It's a basically a Google form where you put in all the information in text. And so I got the easy stuff in there. They're going to ask us the same sorts of questions. What do we do for training? What do we do for, uh, like training professional development? They want an opportunity gap essay. And I can think of a couple of ways to put the experience of the last 12 months in a good narrative for that. Uh, and then one of three of the board standards that I thought I'd put up on a screen show you. I lost the document. I've got a lot of tabs open. The only person I've ever seen have more tabs open than this is Clarissa's screen. It was amazing. Uh, so if you give me a second to just pull that up, I'll. Board of Distinction.
Rob, do you have anybody working with you on this?
Not yet. I'm hoping that, I want to take one of the essays and I'm hoping somebody will, uh, I'm hoping that, I want to take one of the essays and I'm hoping somebody will be able to pick up the other one. Where did it go? I'm sorry.
I can help you, Rob.
Thank you. Can you help me find my page?
No. Are you wanting us just to pick which strand to write about?
Yeah, okay, so we've got strands coming out of standard one, standard three, standard five. And they're all pretty similar sets of questions. Here is standard one. I'm going to share my screen. Who else is sharing a screen?
Probably Lori.
Lori.
Okay. You should see just the screen with standard one benchmark E. With the questions on there. And what I don't have in front of me is the board's standard statement that starts that sentence. Okay, so we provide responsible school district governance by promoting healthy relationships by communicating supportively, inspiring, motivating and empowering others and exercising influence in a positive manner. And the questions there are on the screen. Do we provide opportunities for staff and students to make presentations? Do we foster an environment of empowerment to promote a culture of continuous improvement and flexibility? Does the board use its credibility and influence to mobilize resources and accomplish productive work? Do we promote service as a meaningful way to make long-term contributions? Do we treat all individuals, including board members, staff, students and community with respect? Give that some thought. Here is standard three. Which reads, creating conditions district-wide for student and staff success by providing for learning essentials, including rigorous curriculum, technology and high-quality facilities. And that's do our study and graduation requirements align with the community's high expectations? Do our policies and budget provide the necessary curriculum materials, supplemental tools? Do we have a curriculum adoption cycle and so forth? So answering these questions in 300 words or less around evaluating curriculum and evaluating and updating technology. Perhaps we have a strong story there to tell. Standard five, A is engaging local community. Is it five A? Yeah. Representing the values and expectations they hold for their schools by collaborating with families and community members, responding to diverse interests and needs and mobilizing community resources with the attendant questions there about the linkage with the community.
So we're only taking one of these?
We would take one of the three strands and compose a benchmark essay and evidence of progress or success in selected area that resulted from our decisions.
Well, I think I was just, my, my, I guess, initial thought would be the middle one that you showed us, but.
Okay. That one?
Yeah.
Inviting for learning essentials, including curriculum, technology and high-quality facilities. We're talking about recent adoptions of Funtzen, Pennell and Lucy Galpin's reading. As well as.
Technology updates that we've had through, especially through the pandemic and getting everybody equipped.
There, yeah.
Anyone else?
Well, those facilities, that's a good one because we've got such a, you know, great program going that's been supported by the community. So there's a lot to talk about there.
We could talk about the Camp Evergreen.
In connection with.
Lots of examples, lots of things that we can address on there.
And there's a lot to talk about with those facilities because they're designed with very specific kinds of technology and just the layout of them. I mean, there's a lot going on in those buildings that.
Especially our new ones and the way that they are set up to allow for more in community engagement.
Yeah, so that's a, that would be a good one, I think.
This can only be 300 words?
300 to 500 words.
Oh.
Actually limited to 3,000 characters. It gets me into the, it gets me into the mode of writing poems that way, which I haven't done in a long time, but.
You can't use any good words.
Do a benchmark essay in the form of a song. Go.
So they're really okay with that? Do they limit the emojis too?
I wonder what the WASD board would think about emojis.
That would be awesome.
Yeah. So we have the two essays, but sort of lingering question is do you have a current strategic district improvement plan? And if so, what years does it cover? And I asked Lori, I think I sent a note to Mike and Lori both, is that if we have a district improvement plan, send me a copy.
We do. Our school improvement plans, we want that.
Did you say improvement plan or strategic plan?
Strategic slash district improvement plan. They're looking for the district's strategic plan.
I know that we had a strategic plan, but we haven't formally undertaken one since I've been in the role I've been in. So we, we do have one. So the question is, I mean, it's a couple of years old, at least.
I kind of feel like if you were to look at our governance, the board's policies on that is somewhat, it's pretty strategic, talking about what we want, what we're doing, what our expectations are.
Right.
I don't know if that counts for something there.
This is
I think it would.
From a district up in King County, where they're listing like goals and measures and equity means. So our operations policies could constitute the content of a strategic plan tied in with the results policies. We could say we developed them in 17 or 18, if that's what a strategic plan could look like. That's just a page of stats.
And we've, we've revised a number of the policies.
And what they're looking for for that is just, do you have one? And what years does it cover?
Do we have to show them what it is? Like, or do we just?
No, they didn't want it included this time. I think they, they've asked for those things to be included, but it's good reasoning. We've been developing and maintaining it through coherent governance.
Well, I think we can come up with what we need to for the application and then sounds like, well, you and I can each take one of the essays, right?
I think so. Section three is about the professional development and I thought that our equity audit work would be in connection with the courageous conversations training would be the thing to talk about.
Yeah. Completely agree on that.
Okay. Pick an essay, opportunity gap or technology and resources or curriculum and other resources. Take that offline, but it should be ready to go at our next board meeting workshop because it's probably due by midnight, if not earlier. And then in connection with that, most of us, Rachel's taken, even Rachel's taken at least one year of self-assessment, which I just asked WASD to send us the link for. And we can talk about that on the 22nd as well.
So we should be getting that probably within the next few days.
Yeah, I think so.
So it'll be important for her to take it right away and so they can get our results back.
Yep, imagine that'll come to you.
Oh. So it wouldn't just come to all of us?
Well, the link will come to you and/or Mike and/or Lori and.
I think it went directly to Lori last year.
Okay.
And that should put all the pieces together.
All right, Rob, you and I could talk offline and make sure that we're on the same page of who's taking what part. Okay?
Just have to stop. Okay, there are your faces.
I can check in with them too, to see if I can get the link. I haven't received anything yet.
Oh no, I just made the request right before the meeting started.
Okay.
Yeah.
So as soon as I get it, I'll send it out.
Thank you.
All right.
Thank you for the discussion. Help center me on, around it a little better.
All right, anything else legislative? I know, Rob, in a couple of weeks, it's the Legislative Assembly, I guess that's what we're calling it, General Assembly.
Yeah, I was we, we got you and me attending that. Mike is also invited, but he can't vote.
Do we need to sign up? We don't need to sign up, do we?
We don't need to sign up. They're going to publish a link shortly before the meeting. Like a day or two before the meeting and you just click on the link to join it. The one of us who's going to do the voting will get a credential login. And so if they send the credentials to me, I'll have them. We can assign them to any, any board director. And what I thought might be nice, it's an all-day Friday thing. What I thought might be nice is if we could get a conference room and just kind of be social distanced, but actually meet the two or three of us in one place so that we can have conversations as they present the different positions. You'll be out of town?
I will be, yeah. So I'm gonna, I'm gonna do the conference, but because it's remote, so I'm going to be
Yeah.
not in the area.
What's the date?
25th.
Of September?
Of September, beginning, where's their agenda? I think it starts at 8:00 AM. But it wouldn't be a violation of the OPMA restrictions or the the emergency rules for two of us to meet in one place. With or without Mike, that's still not a public meeting and so the
Yeah.
the phases apply, is what I was told.
I'm going to have to check on some things. If I can make it, I'll try, but I'm.
If that's the case, I thought of the table. I thought of the table, the meeting room in John Dieter's old office. What are you calling that now?
The Dieter Meeting Room?
Dieter Meeting Room, yeah.
Yep.
Because it's got that big TV. You could connect one of the computers to the big TV and when they put the legis, or the legislative positions or the permanent positions on the screen, we can all see them together. Get a chance to discuss. They're anticipating that five positions, five or six positions are going to be debated controversial. They're also building a huge, as possible, consent agenda and they're going to go through each of those positions that they don't think are controversial and ask unanimous consent. And then vote on a consent agenda for each of those. See if they can speed up the vote. Because there are 100 plus of those things.
Yeah.
But I've never had a legislative conference go clear to the end of its agenda time. It always went quicker than that.
Though we've never done one virtual either.
No. The, the fun, interesting part about that is that they're not taking amendments. They had an amendments window for the positions. And so statewide, you had a period of time where you could propose an amendment to the proposed edition. And they were going to take and have meetings to consolidate and so forth. But the last I was told, three positions had proposed amendments. And none of them had more than one.
Well, that'll cut a lot of time out because sometimes it gets out of control with those amendments.
I was never there for any of that and I didn't participate in any of those out of control moments. But yeah, it's it's going to go more streamlined just because of that. Unless people are really struggling with the technological piece. It should be a pretty significant meeting. They're hoping to have twice as many districts in attendance with credentials as they can usually get in Spokane or the west side, wherever they hold them. So that is coming up, 25th. Love to have a friend. And to schedule that room if possible.
Well, I'll be on, but I'll just be virtual.
We want a Zoom meeting on the side while we're.
What's that, Rob?
I say we could start a Zoom meeting on the side so we see your face in a little two-dimensional thing. And point the camera at the big TV.
Maybe we could just text if we want a conference about one of the proposals. I don't know.
What you could do if you have comments or, or suggestions is skim through that manual with the position proposals in it. And if something catches your eye or you think we ought to be strenuously in favor or opposed, tell me.
So, Rob, if more than two of us are going to participate that day, right? Then would we have to say that we are in a public meeting? Do we need Lori to announce it? I would think that we would.
I think we would too.
I'm not sure because non-voting, non-voting attendees are not allowed to speak or participate.
But we would be, we potentially, if you two are in a room and I sent you a text about the way I was thinking on one, that would be potentially a meeting. So I almost.
It could be.
About how we want to vote. So I think we would be on the safe side of making sure that we announce that we're attending this General Assembly for WASD.
I agree.
Because if we were all, if we were all going in person, I think we would announce it.
We were, but we've only ever sent two.
Right, but this year, we're talking about having more than two participate.
Right.
Well, I cannot do it because I'm still itty, so that'll, that'll answer that problem. Yeah, we just need you guys to be able to represent the district for the positions and we'll, we can talk about them in a board workshop ahead of time.
Yeah, that would be the next meeting. We would have to put it on the.
Okay.
Okay.
Yeah, so by the next board meeting, if you've got a real opinion about how that is, how we could, or how we should side on a position, let's talk about that in two weeks.
Okay.
Now send a link out with the positions manual in if you need it.
Maybe highlight the ones that we should pay particular interest to since there's so many in that manual.
I'll try.
Okay.
I've had to read all of them twice, so might have a prioritization question or two. I'm just in the process of producing the manual with the legislative meeting. Okay. That is all.
All right, board meeting debrief. Jenny, you want to lead us through that?
Yeah, I think everything went, we went pretty quick through all of it. It was mainly just our consent agenda except for the one bond sale. Had good, still had pretty good attendance tonight, not as many as last time, but still good attendance and community comments. Anybody else have anything?
I think I, see, every, every meeting we've done a little different because when this, the, you know, the OPMA has changed the way that they've, you know, the rules about citizen comment. So we were taking written comments and then when, now that we have a way for the oral comments, now we're just doing oral comments. Well, people are signing up prior, but then we have like the gal, the, the student that came on during the bond resolution. So when we put her and said, hey, just hold on to citizen comments. Well, then after we got through the three that had signed up before, I asked if there was anyone else that wanted to raise their hand. And I think that, that we weren't necessarily prepared for that. But I think if we were in person, I'm. weren't necessarily prepared for that, but I think if we were in person, I normally would say, anyone else in the audience, even if they haven't signed up. So I don't know how everybody feels about that, by asking for additional hands, virtual hands. So.
Way that I've heard like the, the WASD lawyer, Abigail, the way I heard her structure it is that we have the, uh, right responsibility to declare the, the listening session piece, right? We can declare a period of time, so up to 60 minutes, up to 30 minutes, whatever, uh, the chair of the board thinks is reasonable. Uh, and then continue to receive comments whether or not they've signed up, as long as they give their name and address. So I think what you did was entirely within standard practice.
I think there was only one additional besides, um, Cindy, the gal, the student from San Jose.
That's pretty cool, having someone chime in from San Jose. I've only done that once.
Yeah, that was a disaster.
No, I think, I think it's good that we have as much participation by, by the audience as we can.
I thought it was appropriate, Julie. That was good.
Yeah, I think it was great.
It's nice having them be able to, uh, call in and be on the line, or I don't know, it's not calling in, but signing on and being able to speak to us rather than reading the emails. But I feel like that's way better.
Yes, I agree.
I agree with that too.
Probably are all tired of reading the emails.
I think it's important too to, um, make sure that, because we want to hear people, but if they're saying the same thing over and over, then it's not, there's no point anymore. Other than just a record of how many people are wanting to get that same information. But it can, um, become too much. So I think we need to just mention that. That, uh, new comments only or new twists on whatever it is. Sometimes we have issues that are, you know, get more turnout than others, so.
The advice that I was hearing is that you just declare a, an amount of time up to which you can, you're going to take public comment and then after the 30 minutes or 60 minutes or however much you've allocated, then it's done. And we receive all the.
I think is, is good, except for I hate to miss somebody who has comments about something else and have the time monopolized with people telling us the same thing over and over. Because there might be other comments that we need to hear. That's just a thought.
Yeah, I don't think we were even close to 30 minutes though, so I think we were fine, so.
Very seldom.
Even if we put a timeframe on it, we wouldn't have even come close to that.
Well, hopefully we won't have another reason for, you know, a lot of, I mean, not that we don't love the comments or, you know, the potential of getting repeat comments over and over. Hopefully we don't have any of those until we are back all together again.
I think it's just trying to figure out how to navigate it in this virtual world and figure out what's, what's the best way, but it felt like it worked pretty well tonight.
There is a wrinkle to that because as they relax the, the, the rules or change the waivers or whatever they're going to do, so that we meet in person, we still have to, under these things, provide a way for people to call in. Or that's, that was part of the, that was part of the, one of the WASD COVID-19 calls is that she was saying, we're eventually going to need, be meeting in person, but if we have to still use social distancing, then we still have to have the Zoom stuff going so that people can use it to attend the meeting.
Yeah.
Even if we're in person.
Yeah.
So it won't get simpler. It'll get more interesting until the pandemic dies down.
I mean, the one thing about it is we have had a lot more people attending the meetings, which is something we've always wanted. So I think that's good. I mean, we may not like the reason, but I do think it's a good thing that we have more people joining in with us, seeing what our thought processes are and, and what's going on. So that, we do have still our, you, our usual suspects that normally would come in person. But it is nice to see some new.
New.
I think she is stuck. All right, you're moving again.
Sorry if you hear a dog growling. It's my mom's dogs out on the hallway.
I thought you were distracted by, you know, maybe a cute baby or something.
Well, he's downstairs. But he's been quiet, so he might be asleep.
All right, anything else on the debrief? No? All right, that's all I got.
All right, and then with that, that's the end of our agenda for the board workshop, so, um, we will adjourn this part of the meeting. Uh, we are going to meet an executive session, um, to review the performance of a public employee. So we're going to sign off of this call and then sign back on to another call.